Good evening, everyone. I like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Here.
Councilmember Dibala?
Here.
Councilmember Kostik?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Circe?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. This evening, I'd like to start us off with a moment of silence. Last evening, we unfortunately lost a member of our community, Wigan, who is here. You can see pictured with her family. So if we could all take a moment to remember her. So over the last few weeks, Wigan had been battling with the virus COVID-19. Three weeks ago, she gave birth to a baby who is home with the family now. And over the last few weeks, talking to family and friends, and especially today, one of the things that I learned is that her name in means my community, my people. And you can tell by her smile in this picture. She meant so much to our community, our broader city, the community in Essex House where she lived with her, among the Ethiopian community in our city and in her family. She meant a great deal. And it is a tragic loss for all of us right now. And I know her daughter, Mareette, who actually is also on our youth council here in the city, sent a note to us today thanking everyone in the community for the massive support the family is getting at this time. The family also asked that at this time, they have privacy to mourn the loss and to really be together as a family. So I know there's a great outpouring of support for them. And there'll be much time in the future that we can give all of them the assistance and support they need. So tonight, I just wanted to say thank you for everyone who has already shown their support and to extend our deepest sympathies to the family and friends. Thank you very much. Now, moving on to our agenda for this evening, there are no changes. Looking ahead to our agenda over the next few weeks, we continue on Monday night with our budget work sessions. This upcoming Monday night on April 27th, we have our departmental budgets and personnel, and we continue with the discussion of budget reconciliation. Then on Wednesday, April 29th, we will have a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate and our budget public hearing. And then we have a budget work session that evening, which is our budget reconciliation. Then on Monday, May 4th, we have our final budget work session, and that is our final budget reconciliation. This is the evening where we go through our reconciliation list and we take hand votes to see what will ultimately end up in the final budget. The budget is then voted on. The first reading ordinance is May 13th, and the second is on May 20th. At the moment, on Wednesday, May 6th, that meeting is tentative. Hopefully, we will get all our budget work done that is needed before the vote on the evening of May 4th. So right now, Wednesday, May 6th is only a tentative meeting. The other piece of business we have this evening is that today is the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. And so we have a mayoral proclamation. So there were many events scheduled for today, and I'm glad to see that our city staff working. Can you hear me? Now we can?
That's better.
Oh, okay. It's always, I don't, it's always the Wednesday night my phone decides to. So I'll just give me a high five if you can't hear me. They, I'll read the mayoral proclamation. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, and today we celebrate its 50th anniversary. And whereas news and continuing challenges, including climate change, pollution, sea level rise, and loss of forests, wetlands, and other wildlife habitats reinforce the need for adequate protections for the air we breathe, the water we drink, the land we inhabit, and the animals we live alongside. And whereas recent reports from the International Panel on Climate Change and the National Climate Assessment have made clear that we are in a global climate emergency by documenting the warming and their dramatic effects on our earth. Unemployment, displacement, and homelessness. And whereas communities, neighborhoods, and residents
Kate, we can't hear you most of the time.
No.
It's not working.
Kate.
You're not working. Mayor?
Can someone chat her from the side?
This is a good proclamation.
Well, we'll post it after the meeting, anyway.
Does anybody live near Elm?
We're not, we're not hearing you at all, Kate.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I don't know what's going on. I've been on my phone all day. Probably very tired. All right, so I'll just read. Now, therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2020, as the 50th anniversary of Earth Day and call on residents to reflect on the origins of the modern environmental movement and look ahead to the next 50 years of climate action. All right. So that is our proclamation. And next, lucky that I don't have to talk for the next little while until I can fix my phone. I'm actually going to be turning it over now to, for a presentation from the Council Compensation Task Force. So I think I'm turning it over to Ashley, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Let me share the screen. Can everyone see that, see the presentation?
Yes.
You good? Okay. All right. So hi, I'm Ashley Nugent. I'm going to be presenting on behalf of the Council Compensation Task Force. And I think the way that we decided as the task force to do this is I lead the presentation, and then if the council has any questions, my colleagues are going to help answer those questions. I am delivering this presentation from the basement, hiding from a toddler. So if you hear a scream, that's happening. Okay. So here we go. So here's our outline. So we're going to go through these five main headings. I don't think I need to read each of them, we'll be going over them. So first, this is the charter that we were tasked with in the very beginning. This was the first sheet of paper that we had all looked over together. And these were the questions commissioned by the council. So quickly, I can go through each of them. Are the principles of compensation still appropriate to guide this and future compensation? Our answer to that is no, and we will get into the reasons why. Number two, considering racial equality in the review, are the salary and level of benefits a barrier to running or serving on the city's council to come apart? Absolutely, 100%. You will get recommendations on that. Are there non-salary considerations such as childcare, transportation, better barriers to the service? Yes, and we have some answers for you there. And we also have other recommendations. And then at the very end, you will see a recommendation on salary. So the committee composition, like I said, Ashley Nugent, I'm from Ward 2. We have Frederick Schultz from Ward 6, Kelly Skelton from Ward 6, Paulina, Ward 3, Ruth Williams, Ward 3, Janet Williams, Ward 4, I don't think she's with us tonight, and Enku, Ward 4 as well. And as you all noticed, we've had a substantial amount of meetings. And all of these meetings took place basically before this COVID crisis. So any salary considerations came into play before that. But we still think that fundamentally, our recommendations are very important, and they should, we should continue to go forward with them. I guess we don't have to debate the merits on why, and that's up to you all to decide. But you know, I think one of, one of the main focuses of this whole committee we are all agreed on is the principle of equity. And we'll get into why we think that council compensation and equity principles go hand in hand. And it's very important for you all to consider this now. Okay, so just for a little background, mayor's annual salary, $14,771. The council members receive $11,362. The health insurance cost sharing, the city pays 50% of the lowest cost-based premium rates for the individual, estimated values of $10,000. And then the required deductions, each member must contribute 70% of their annual salary. I can't quite see the other half of this. It's cut off, but it's okay. So each member must contribute 70% of their salary to the state requirement in pension system in Maryland. Members are vested after 10 years of public service. Next. Jessie really was instrumental in helping us collect some of these numbers. She sat in our meetings, and we're very thankful to her. So this slide was helped, we got some help from Jessie. Salary range benefits, costs of the seven members of the city, as well as other expenses with the asterisk, and you can read along the bottom what those include. So from July 2018 to June 2019, the total costs were $2,012, with the salaries and benefits totaled $112,000. And then July 2019 to June 2020, $193,000. And the current budget allocates $114,000 to salary benefits. At the beginning of this, we also queried all the council members and asked how much they would estimate they worked per week as a council member or mayor. We, I think we received five out of seven responses, which was great. And you'll see the summary here. So five of the seven members reported regular inputs exceeding 30 hours per week, which is almost a full-time job per week. Two of the members reported exceed 40 hours per week, so more than a full-time job. And one of seven members reported regular inputs of 20 hours per week. So this was an informal data collection, as I mentioned, which helps guide our principles. We went over these, these charts when we presented to you all a few weeks ago. We've included them in the final presentation just for comparison. I don't think I'm going to need to be too detailed about this. I think they're pretty self-explanatory. You can see where Tacoma Park falls in comparison to other cities like Greenbelt Laurel, Rockville College Park, Bowie-Gatersburg, and Westminster. Another chart is the compensation comparisons to other mayor municipalities, done with population size. You can see what the mayor makes and the council. And if you scroll down, you can see Tacoma Park highlighted in red. Population 16,000, like I said earlier, mayor 13,000, council members 11,000. So compensation comparisons to other Maryland municipalities. We excluded Frederick and Annapolis because their mayor performs the role of city manager. So we thought that was a fundamental distinction here under, how we operate under a council management form of government. And then we have the policy and legislative authority are vested in the government body of the seven members. And the council, as we all know, has a wide range of responsibilities, like setting the city's annual budget, appointing members committees, hiring the city manager, and the city attorney. And I think this is the last slide. This is 2016 comparison data, municipalities that are larger than 3,000. And you can see along the bottom, the cities we compared with, and kind of where the mayor and council fall there. Pretty self-explanatory. Okay. So basically, one of the things we were tasked with as we went through in the beginning is whether the, we found the principles, the 2003 principles of compensation were still relevant. And our answer to that is no. And here's a quick overview of what the 2003 principles say. So number one, the positions of the mayor and council member are part-time and should be treated that way. Number two, full monetary compensation for the mayor and council members is not appropriate. Three, it is appropriate to monetarily compensate the mayor and council members to some extent of their work. Four, monetary compensation creates an obligation for the mayor and the council members to perform their jobs. Five, monetary compensation provides status to the mayor and council members. Six, the mayor's salary should be greater than the council member. And number seven, compensation for the mayor and council members should be comparable to Maryland municipalities of similar size and complexity. We worked really hard on these new principles for the council, and we gave your presentation of what they looked like last time. And while they haven't changed, we wanted to kind of give some justifications on why we were unsatisfied with the 2003 principles. So for the first, for the first bullet point, we have the position of the mayor and council member are part-time and should be treated that way. We took issue with this because the part-time distinction sets an unrealistic precedent as the cyclical and unpredictable nature of the council's work usually requires more than part-time work, which we got through the informal data from you all. And you know, I don't think there's any way to say as a council member or the mayor, you know, our job is part-time and it stops here. The emails keep coming. People expect, you know, high-quality services here in Tacoma Park. And I don't think, we as a group don't think that there is a distinction to be made. Well, you know, I've put in my, my time, and my time is part-time. So, thank you, goodbye. And also, the way that the council members quote "treat their job", I don't think we all, we don't think that the way that job is treated is a principle decision. It's a decision on how each council member or mayor would like to treat their job. Whether you want to put in 20 hours or 40 hours, that distinction is yours if you're alone. We also had trouble with the word "status". Conferring a specific status on a council member is done through the public election. When do you become the council member? It's not through the monetary payment. And also, we agree that the word "status" is also very elitist. So we would like to see that removed. And so our unique principle that we've created is the comparability to other municipalities. So the size of Tacoma Park comparative to other municipalities doesn't necessarily correlate with the complexity of work that our council performs. As previously discussed, the Tacoma Park constituency is deeply engaged in local matters, requires numerous hours of attention. And so we find that, as you'll see in the principle we've created, that we do not need to compare our salary to other municipalities. The principle, the prior principle also does not correlate with the council's priority on engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government. And the final point is the point that really, you know, was the driver for all of us is the equity principle. We've really appreciated how this council has used equity in all of their decision-making. And so we find that equity in the prior principles to include racial equity is entirely overlooked. The council compensation package allows, the current council compensation package does not allow all residents of racial socio-economic backgrounds to consider public service. And by increasing compensation, we are allowing for reasonable wages, which will allow more voices to be heard, more voices to engage, more voices to even consider participating. The equity requires, we believe, as the, as the task force, that the council compensation package be increased so all residents have a fair opportunity to run for elections and serve. So here are the updated principles that we suggest that you all adopt. The purpose is to provide, we developed a purpose, so to provide the mayor and council members with salary and non-salary benefits to help ensure that all residents have a fair chance to run for city elective office. So our first suggested principle that you adopt is that the city of Tacoma Park is committed to the fair and equitable administration of compensation, which includes salary and benefits. Number two, compensation shall be balanced between the city's financial condition and the stewardship provided by the mayor and council members. I think this, this really drives home the collective opinion that we all had of, you know, we believe that we should be able to pay you a lot more, but we need to balance that with the financial conditions of the city as evidenced by the budget discussions that are currently going on. And number three, in recognition of the high-quality community service services rendered by the city council, the city should strive to maintain a compensation structure that provides fair and reasonable compensation. And here's what I was talking about earlier, which need not be comparable with municipalities of similar size. Four, in order to recognize increased responsibility, the mayor's salary shall be greater than the council members. Number five, council compensation information shall be transparent and easily accessible. What we mean by that is just simply you can find it on the website. And number six, I think there's a general consensus that it was pretty disappointing that it's taken, what is it, almost 20 years to update these principles? And the compensation itself hasn't been updated in a very, very long time. So we really would like to drive home that the principles themselves and the salary need to be reevaluated at least every four years. You can do it sooner than that if you'd like, but we wanted to make sure that this doesn't go by the wayside any longer. So here is the, what we are recommending. We are recommending doubling the salary of the mayor and the city council. So mayor's annual salary would be $32,000. The city council annual salary is $24,000. This is not a recommendation that we took lightly at all. We worked very hard to come to this agreement. We are all forcefully behind this decision. And we really hope that this is something that you all undertake and ensure happens. So, and we would also like to continue benchmarking the ECI. And we should round it to the nearest dollar for the use or ease of budgeting and payroll.
Jessie.
Who was that?
For Jessie. For, for the payroll, yeah, we need to round it up.
Oh, it's Kelly. Hi, Kelly. Okay. Okay, and Kelly, who you just heard, she is one of our benefits queens. She was instrumental in helping form the benefits side. So if you have questions on benefits, I'm, I am confident Kelly will be able to answer them for you. So here are benefits recommendations. The council should have access to all types of categories and benefits provided to the city staff, FSA plan, deferred compensation, matching 457 plan. The council should review the percentage the city pays for health insurance and consider matching it to what is provided to the full-time city staff. The council should consider providing reimbursements for dependent care of at least $2,500 up to the maximum non-taxable amount. This is a really important recommendation for me. This is a really important recommendation for me. You know, do we, I mean, I think Casey might be able to speak to this later. I'm sure, you know, all of the council service, being away from your kids is really difficult or being away from other sources of dependents. So we'd like to see some sort of reimbursement for childcare expenses so that people like Casey are able to attend things without having to pay out of their pocket for childcare. And as the city develops new HR benefits or policies, consideration should be given to the council eligibility. The council should develop a menu of available benefits, and given the high cost of health insurance, the budget available for each council member package should be greater than the base cost of insurance. Two more slides. Here are some additional considerations. The city should continue to consider additional methods promoting public service to include identifying alternative venues and networks to publicize committee openings. We thought it would be a good idea for publicizing tools to help assist first-time candidates, creating Tacoma Park-specific tools or trainings on public service. And as we see with the county, just an idea and additional consideration establishing publicity, finance campaigns for candidates who can demonstrate broad support via grants or small donor matching funds, which help promote equal access. And finally, our conclusion. Like I said in the beginning, in order, you know, this was really, as you see in the second paragraph, equity is up in our primary guiding principle. We hope that our recommendations are valuable to the city council, we want our city council to look more like Tacoma Park, serving on the city council virtually a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five commitment. Hours, literal hours worked very greatly from week to week among council members who have no assigned staff. And examining comparable municipalities, we've chosen to give this data little weight as the council workload has less to do with the population size and more to do with residents' expectations that Tacoma Park always be at the forefront of progressive issues. And like I had mentioned earlier, all seven commission members, we all give our full backing to these recommendations and justications. This has not come easily, we spent a lot of hours hammering out these issues, ironing out our differences. And we feel honored that the city entrusted us with this complex and reassignment. And we, like, we'd like to again, thank you, city staff, especially Dusty, who helped us greatly on technical issues. So there is the presentation for you all. So now I think we'll, and I think, do we open it up for questions? Do I, do I stop sharing my screen?
Great, can you?
I'm just not sure. Got it.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great, all right. Tonight, I'm not sure, so just wanted to check first to see if there are any members of the, the task force that wanted to speak or add to anything. You can, if you, and then I will turn it over to the, the city council. Again, if you, if you'd like to speak and you're on the task force or if you're a city council member, go down to the bottom of your screen where it says participants, click on that. And then when that comes up at the bottom of, on the right-hand side, you'll see something that says raise your hand, and you can raise your hand. So before I open it up to comments and questions, I first just want to say thank you very much for this in-depth work that you've done. Really terrific, it's very helpful, it was, it's clearly laid out. And we know you had many meetings on this and thought very carefully, so I just want to first extend my thanks to everyone who participated in providing this information to us. I'm not seeing any hands.
Yep.
Oh, county, sorry, Mayor Williams?
Thank you, I just wanted to say that I think we all recognize that times have shifted a little bit since we had our discussions and came to some conclusions. But I think the important thing for you as a council to do is to decide how, if you want to make any changes to anything and adopt this. And if, if there are considerations, budget considerations that you need to take into account as far as salary change, everybody understands that, but it's important to adopt this as a, as a goal, as, as principles, as a way to guide you and current, and former, and current, what's the word I want, future councils. So that you have this in place. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from members of the task force, council members?
In my life? I mean, can you hear me? Yeah, I, I think Ashley has done an excellent job in saying what needs to be said. We all felt, all of us, I'm, I'm speaking for all of us really, because we know, we've been through a lot, a lot of hours. And there was disagreements, but we were able to work them out. I'm very proud of, of what we've been able to do on behalf of the city council. I myself came in to this work feeling very strongly about racial equity in terms of enabling more people in the city of Tacoma Park to be able to serve, to even have a chance to even consider running for city council. And what I, what I found out in our very first meeting, that we were all on the same page from the very first meeting about that, about that idea. So beyond that, I, I don't have anything additional to add right at the present time unless some question comes up later.
Great, thank you. Next I have Kelly Skelton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate sort of what Bruce was saying, which is that we fully understand that this moment in time, it's very hard to look at a budget line increase when your tax base could be shrinking, when businesses are struggling. On the other hand, determining the compensation is what can allow more different, better people, not that you're not fantastic, because we all think that you are, to engage on this topic or in this, in this realm and to represent the city of Tacoma Park and lead us through difficult times ahead. And so I feel that's almost more important today than it was six weeks ago to make a commitment to saying that this council should be able to be combined with another normal wage job to produce a livable salary for a resident of Tacoma Park. And, and allow people the, the ability to consider their word on the council.
Thank you so much. Let's see, Mr. Weed, I thought I saw your hand up, did you, did you take it down? Paul, I think we have a bad connection with you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have anything to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll turn now to council comments and questions. First I have Councilwoman Koptick.
Hey, everyone. First of all, thank you very much for all of your work on this. It's obvious, both from the output and the number of meetings that you've had, that you really took this seriously and put a lot of thought into this. And I really, really appreciate that. I think this has moved us in a really great direction in terms of understanding where we should be going with the salaries, the benefits, which was something that I had not really given much thought to prior to these discussions. And I think that contributes a lot to this, you know, concept of how we're making these positions more equitable and more accessible to people. And again, thank you for the focus on racial equity and on making sure that we're making these positions something that people can access and that can be, we can have a council that is truly representative of the city. I, I have a couple of questions. I think one of the things I'm struggling with a little bit is the fact that it seems to me there are barriers in terms of compensation and benefits, and then there are additional sort of structural barriers to people running for council and being on the council. And I think you, you all touched on those in a lot of ways, and it's clear that you gave that a lot of thought. One of them, you talked about was childcare, for example. I think funds to be able to dedicate towards childcare is really important. Just speaking from personal experience, one of the big challenges with regard to childcare is also just the irregularity of the work that we do on the council. And so it's, it's not necessarily possible to have a babysitter who's always going to watch your kid from seven o'clock to nine o'clock on Monday night, and that's going to do it, or even, you know, nine o'clock to twelve o'clock on Wednesday morning, depending on what your schedule is like. And so that, that's just sort of one of those structural things that I think is a barrier in terms of making it possible for people, not just to have the funds, but also just to be able to logistically make it work. And I think what you did in terms of providing some, some recommendations in terms of how to increase the information that people have about running for office, to have mentors for people interested in running for office, to look into public financing, all of those are really great suggestions. And I'm wondering, two questions, one is with regard to more of the structural barriers outside of compensation. Do you feel like you were able to do a pretty deep dive on those things? Or do you feel like that's something that would really benefit from having a much broader discussion and maybe some other type of inputs through focus groups or surveys? Or I'm not sure what, what would best get the information we need. But I'm curious if you have thoughts on that and how we could better move the needle on that side of things. And then I'm also interested in, in terms of budgetary impact, if you gave thought in terms of the benefits, the impact of, and cost of the benefit, the increased benefits that you're recommending.
I can answer maybe the first part of the question. I think that we came to the realization that we, we could come up with some ideas and make some recommendations on benefits, but that it probably was going to require some discussion of you all with your HR folks to explore some of those possibilities and understand some of the, some of the barriers that might exist for some of those. And there might be something that we didn't think about that they're very aware of. So that professional expertise which you have would be a very helpful discussion for you all.
I would say on the first part, in terms of deep dives into other barriers, we did not, especially like meeting times and membership in a multitude of other, you know, organizations that require you to travel to those meetings, no, we didn't. We weren't able to do a deep dive into the sort of the structural, I, you know, surroundings of being on this council and, you know, what we would suggest. We, I mean, certainly something that came up frequently was, you know, a constituent services and how more constituent services could be provided to the council. At the same time, adding HR is a challenging thing. It's becomes, you know, an expensive proposal fairly quickly. And so I think we backed off of that, but I think there is more work that needs to be done twofold. You know, one, identifying better venues to, to seek input from the full community. And two, seeking input from current and former council people regarding the actual barriers that they experienced and struggles that they had while they were on the council and how those can be mitigated. Meanwhile, on the COVID nineteen side, I think a lot of businesses are realizing that the future may look different than the past because we have become more agile, we have become more comfortable working remotely. And so that could be an internal decision, you know, within the, the council as to, does a council person need to show up in person to every single one of these meetings, or could some items be done remotely, et cetera? Could some items be, you know, worked on instead of, you know, in a group, you know, via a live document or something like that? Certainly, the PTA is struggling with that because we're not allowed to hold any votes of our membership electronically. So there can be some barriers that are like within the letter of your, of your ruling and guiding documents, and that would be something else that would need to be looked at. But I don't think that we, because, because we were charged with looking at the compensation and whether it was, you know, really appropriate. We didn't, it wasn't until we presented to the council the first time that we started looking at other barriers. But certainly, you know, ensuring, one topic that came up frequently is now that we have moved our elections to match with the, the county and the, and the normal election cycles in two thousand and twenty, how much more would a council person need to expend, you know, a candidate need to expend in order to get any type of name recognition amongst the melee that's going to happen? And so, you know, possibly Tacoma Park looking at public funding for that to level the playing field between, between candidates would be one possible way of assisting, you know, all regular people in attaining a council position.
Great, thank you very much. I, I think that there's a lot of great stuff to think about here, and I think you've really gotten us started in the right direction. And I'm looking forward to continuing to explore this and particularly explore some of the additional barriers that are, are inherent here and that we need to address. And I think are not just specific to Tacoma Park, but are part of the system in general that needs a little more investigation. So thank you all very much for your work on this.
Hi, I have a.
All right, oh, wait, who is that?
It's Ashley, I can't raise my hand.
Oh, yeah.
I think I'm a.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I can't, it's okay.
Okay.
This is just sort of a follow-up to Councilmember Koptick, and it's in line, I seen Councilmember Cersei last time brought up the structural, the structural barriers as well. You know, I think there's like internal and external processes that work here. And, you know, Councilmember Koptick, from your perspective, you understand some structural barriers that maybe we don't quite understand. So maybe it would be helpful if you all can, you know, maybe draft out what you see some of the structural barriers as being. And on the external side, then a committee can be formed about structural barriers coming from what you see as a structural barrier, what Councilmember Cersei sees as a structural barrier, what the mayor sees as a structural barrier, and then we can kind of all collaborate on ways to overcome those barriers. I think it is hard to see some of the things that you see. And so if we're talking about real structural change, which is fundamentally very important, it might be helpful to have some kind of document or draft from you all, trying to get a better picture or grasp as to what that is.
Great, Councilwoman Cersei?
Thank you so much for your presentation, and I, I agree one hundred percent with you, Ashley, that I think we're at a point where, you know, there are some things that members of the council from our various backgrounds would know based on our experience being on, like, running for office and serving on council. There are some things that are as trivial as, you know, the expectation that folks should be available in the middle of the day. Well, if you have a full-time job, maybe you work for the feds, you are legally bound to not address council issues during the day. So just trying to kind of bring our experiences to bear with an eye for how we might be able to come up with some of these novel recommendations that don't cost an extra dime to figure out how to make sure that we're scheduling meetings at a time that would work for folks or how we may be able to work with some of our county colleagues around meeting times and things so that we can ensure that even people who work typical nine to five. that even people who work typical nine to fives are still able to be as actively engaged in in council activities as they would like, given that this is according to the books, a part time position. So so I can't stress enough how the recommendations that you all have made are really highlighting a lot of things that are not just, you know, as was discussed, not just related to council compensation, but systemic problems that aren't just limited to the city of Tacoma Park. It's just the, you know, the electoral process at all levels, you know. Those that have can run, right? And so, you know, I think we could kind of be the trailblazers that we are in terms of identifying ways to kind of get past some of those barriers to entry for folks who might be interested in running for a council. We talked a lot about the fact that, you know, the world is different now and the budget is different. One thing that came to mind for me was, you know, are there some aspects of the recommendations that you all pose that we might be able to adopt without additional resources? And this might be a question for, you know, our HR staff. But, you know, we already are provided a certain tier of benefits. So, you know, is there some possibility for us to open up a buffet, so to speak, of benefits that would enable members of the council who may not need a health plan because they have a health plan somewhere else, but could, you know, would prefer to use their benefits package for another purpose? And so I think that there might be some opportunities for us, even in this tight fiscal world in which we're living in right now, to still be able to adopt some of the principles that are outlined without necessarily increasing our our salaries right now. I also appreciate the comments that were raised earlier about, you know, this council working to try to solidify. And we've done it in a number of other instances where we've we've written resolutions to commit future councils to really taking next steps in terms of addressing some of these challenges. So part of it may be we're not able to necessarily increase salaries this budget. But if we are committed to ensuring equal access to to folks and trying to provide vehicles for more residents in the city to to run for office, then I think it's important for us to think about ways in which we could solidify some of the principles that are outlined here to encourage future councils to to really take next steps in terms of trying to address some of the things that that we see and that we're discussing today. So again, I just want to thank, you know, you all for all of the hard work that you've put in. I think this, the recommendations that you've made are very sound and make sense. And I think opens the door for future conversations about how we run as a council, but also how we may be able to solidify next steps for future councils to make sure that we're kind of moving forward. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
I would just like to join some of my colleagues and thank you guys for this report. Some of these issues I've been talking about for a while since being elected in 2012. And I really appreciate that you guys are asking some of these questions. One thing that I would I would like to say is that, you know, I I think looking at racial equity is good. But the reason why I think more people of color, the majority population of the city are not running for council or not even considering running for council is 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 more than just compensation. I think compensation is a big part, but this is a very difficult job, you know. And, you know, people either don't want that complexity in their lives or don't understand that complexity. So, you know, benefits, money is great. But you need in in helping people run for office, but running for office and governing are just way two different things. So it would take a lot, I think, a lot more than just what was presented to get more people that represent the majority of this population to actually get involved in elected office in Tacoma Park. But I do want to thank you guys for everything you've done. This is excellent, a good start. And I would remind my colleagues that with the health emergency, things are going to get even more difficult for us. And I think we should really look at implementing some of these proposals. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kovak.
Thank you. I want to join with my colleagues in expressing appreciation for the work that the committee did. I think it was a very thorough job and appreciate the recommendations. I think the reality is in the current climate, it's no knock on any of the work that was done. We're not going to be, in my view, anyway, approving increases now. We can talk about it at some point in the future, once we get past the the crisis that we're in. Couple of other comments and then two questions. I like the fact that in the changes that the committee suggested about the principles for compensation, that the one saying that money can first status was removed. I agree, it's the election that is the status, whether the pay was nothing or, you know, a lot more. I think that's important. I'm not sure I agree completely with the idea that the level of work is because of progressivism or that approach to wanting to take on more progressive legislation or ideas in the city as much as, in my experience anyway, it's being responsive to the people that we represent. In many cases, on relatively routine kinds of things, takes takes up a lot of time. And, you know, I'm happy to do it, but that's a big part of what the work is. It's not so much that it's the the major legislative of that. When it comes up before us can take up a lot day to day. I think it's the more basic kinds of constituency support. In terms of doing more online, that's something we can think about. There are challenges, and I think it was referred to by at least one of the speakers from the panel, because we do have the sunshine laws and we can't be making decisions that can't be ruled by the by the public. So I think we'd have to think more about that. As far as the election synchronization goes, it's not 100% clear to me that it will cost a lot more, given the way our elections run, where it's really only part of September and October, pretty active part of it. By then, just because we're in a very democratic area, most of the primary activity is essentially over by then. And certainly, there's a lot going on. But many of the elections, in this area, the the big fight is over the primary. So I'm not convinced that people running here would get completely drowned out and have to mount some sort of massive new type of election. So one question on that point, though, is on public financing, how that how people on the committee think that would work? Because right now, the barrier to entry is very low. If you get one person to nominate you and another person to second you, you can be on, you can be on the on the ballot. And I'm not sure how we feel about somebody who has maybe only two supporters, whether they should get public financing or if there should be some additional hurdle to that. So maybe, I don't know, if someone on the committee wants to say a few words about that.
No, we would want to model it off of some existing policies that have worked. And typically, they require a demonstration of broad public support. So a certain number of existing small dollar donations is typically the threshold. So Tacoma Park would need to do the analysis to determine how many voters there are, how many voters actually typically vote. And then look at, you know, what percentage of that a single candidate would need to be able to acquire in terms of small dollar individual donations or large dollar, but in order to qualify for a public funding.
Okay. I mean, one other thing to think about is whether having a number of people signing a petition could do it also, because I don't think that many contributions end up getting made here. So I'm not sure that's the right measure, but I I take I take the point. One last question. The recommended dollar amount, it is an increase, it's roughly a doubling, is still not a huge salary. And so even with the benefits and then some of the other things that my colleagues talked about, do people on the committee feel that this is enough of a hike in pay to actually bring about the type of result that we're talking about here in terms of broadening the population of people who are able to or do think about running? I don't know if someone wants to answer that or not. It's maybe it's something that we can think about before. But in addition to us providing an estimate of how many hours we've worked, you know, we didn't really have that deeper conversation. And so I agree that maybe that's something we should do for the future in terms of the kinds of barriers that there are that there are or the challenges that we face. Because certainly, for example, for me with older kids and not responsible for day to day, that's quite different than, say, what Councilmember Kostic has to has to face. And so maybe down the road, once we're not in the crisis, that would be worthwhile to have a discussion about how each of us see those. But again, thanks, and I appreciate the work very much. And I'm sure we'll continue talking about it going forward. Thanks.
I just have a brief comment on one point that you raised about the source of the some of the work that you all do, whether the the comment that we had in there about kind of at the forefront of progressive issues. And you were commenting about the kind of the standard work that takes up a lot of your time. I think the the point to remember is that if it was just, if you were just doing the standard work, there might be more reason to say that your pay and and benefits compensation should be more pegged to similar municipalities. And I think what makes Tacoma Park have that extra piece on top of that is that need to or desire to address the concerns of the community to have a progressive solution to whatever the issues are. And that's what kind of, I think, in my mind, unlinks the compensation from being to comparable municipalities.
I agree.
And the council's own priority of having an engaged and responsive city government sort of makes the application of the pay from another municipality where the council meets once or twice a month, not for relevant comparison.
If if I may, I'd like to react to a couple of things here. And and that is is that I would hate for the COVID-19 virus and the stress that the city is currently under to delay the the salary increases that we have recommended, if that's, of course, the direction you want to go at all. And this this is a a temporary crisis that's going to hurt the city's budget for a year or two. But I think it's all the more reason why we need to be considering making sure that more people have an opportunity to run for election and to 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 consider it. Councilmember Kostic raised, asked if we had if we had done a deep dive on some of these issues or barriers. I think we have done a deep dive as best we could, given that two of us have served on the council for a good number of of years. The fact is, is that we're never going to be able to eliminate all the barriers. So in a sense, what I think we need, we or you need to do is to see this as an iterative process. Raise these salaries, follow our recommendations for the 2020 election, which means you need to get it into the budget now. Because if you don't, then it's going to be 2022, and we will have lost all the momentum for making these changes. And then then a two years from now, in the 2022 election, you will have the experience of knowing whether or not this was a these salaries were adequate to attract a a larger number of candidates of of varying types of folks. Whereas if you don't, then you will, you will, we will be as ignorant about the situation about barriers as we are now. We won't have had the opportunity to to learn anything from from the experience of the of the 2020 election. It's just there's no way of knowing what barriers might might exist out there. So think of this more as an iterative process. This committee came together, is given it our best shot, which we think are very realistic in in addressing most of the very obvious barriers. But basically, the decision comes down not to forming another committee or getting opinions of of the community. It's your decision, you're the council members, you're the only ones that that can appreciate the the complexity and the challenges of of the job. And I I wouldn't strongly encourage that that you move forward, realizing that this may be not the most perfect solution, but it's a it's a good valuable step in the right direction for the next election. I don't think we can, with the COVID-19 virus putting so much stress, we're going to afford not to raise these salaries. And keep in mind that even at $32,000, the mayor's salary would still be way, way below the lowest wage salary worker in the city. So it's, it may seem like it's a big jump, but we're starting from a very low level. And it's not a big jump. And and the salaries, even if they are adopted as we recommend it, is still going to be a pretty modest level of 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 our earnings by by any measure. So that's what I would say. I would encourage you to 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 think about trying to do this and move forward with it.
Okay, thank you. Next is Councilman Dibala.
Thank you. First, thank you very much, all of you, for this great presentation and for all the work that you've done. And the recommendations that you've put forward, there's a lot to think about it, and there's a lot of really good, good stuff here. I was thinking along the lines of what Councilmember Cersei put forward. Are there pieces of this that we can start to move forward with now, even if we are not able to do this, do the salary increase right at this very moment to to commit to at least to, let's discuss and and adopt the principles? Let's look at some of the benefits that are that there are also barriers that are not as costly. Can we ask the HR folks to look at the benefits package the way that Councilmember Cersei described it? And can we can we make a little progress on some of the other barriers? I I'm very intrigued by the public financing proposal in particular. And so I, again, thank you very much, and that's the direction I would like to move in. Oh, one question I have, I noticed on the principles. I like them. They don't mention part time versus full time. I assume that was deliberate, and I wondered if someone could comment on that.
I can comment. I I think one of the things we 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 talked about in our committee was that the term part time has a has a pretty clear meaning to most people in our society. It means that you don't work a 40 hour week, you work a 30 hour week or or some fraction thereof, and everything spins off of that. In this case, it just seemed to be a term that just was completely inapplicable. To use sort of the saying, this is part time work. And we had a difficult time coming up with a proper, a better adjective to to kind of substitute for the term part time. So we just decided to abandon the whole part time versus full time nomenclature and and because it's not really helpful to talk about the 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 job that the city council does in those terms. I don't think there's a politician in America that would say that their work is is a full time or part time. It's just not, it's not appropriate. That would be my thought.
We also didn't want to make it a full time requirement because, A, because, A, we didn't feel that the city was ready to pay a full-time living wage to the council. But we also felt like if you use the word full-time, you would make it difficult for somebody who does have a, a full-time job to be able to balance this commitment with the regulations of that job. So we preferred to leave it undefined and allow the council member or mayor to decide, you know, whether they were looking at a part-time or a full-time commitment. But certainly, all of you signed up for a part-time job that's now 50 hours a week. So I'm not sure that that distinction in terms of the principles was guiding or driving in any way and could actually preclude some people from participating if you defined it as full-time.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. I'm not seeing any other hands, and nobody's waving at me at the moment. So, oh, Ashley, go ahead.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I've heard a couple of people ask, you know, what you, we would recommend with going forward. It's not the monetary considerations at this time. I would, and I, I'm sure my colleagues would agree, would absolutely go forward with the new principles of compensation. We all agree that the 2003 principles are extremely outdated. So if you want to take a look at those first, edit them as you, as you speak. But we would hope that at least, at the very least, that is a step in the right direction. And we would hope that you would look at that first.
And as Fred said, that this was supposed to be an iterative process, those principles within them really state that they should be reviewed and compensation should be reviewed on a fairly regular schedule. And it says within those principles to review them. Because we can get better information in the next four years and make a better Tacoma Park and not keep old principles just because we agreed to them once. We want to see continued progress on making our government accessible to every resident of the city.
And my quick additions, my quick addition to those comments is the iterative process, you could look at the principles first and the benefits second.
Yeah. So what I was going to actually recommend to my colleagues is that I believe, given the interim report we had a couple of months ago and the report tonight, that we may think about adopting by resolution, looking at the revised principles. And then, as we're going through the budget over the next couple of weeks, I would also like to have our HR director, and again, depending on schedules with the current public health crisis, join us for a meeting to discuss the proposal on benefits. I know she has some thoughts on that, as she was able to join you for at least one meeting, if not two. So I know she definitely has some things that she would like to share with us and get that input, and then think about, are there some things that we want to move forward with now? Or I think it was Councilwoman Cersei, but I may have missed who said that, you know, kind of give sort of direction or lay out a plan for future councils. So I think as we're looking at our schedule moving forward over the next couple of weeks, if it's okay with my colleagues, I will look at the agenda and think about when we could bring back specifically the principles to look at more carefully and consider adopting. And then look at the other pieces of the recommendations as we're doing the budget, have our HR director come in when she's available to have a deeper discussion on that and move forward from there. Sound like good next steps? I'm seeing head nodding and thumbs up. So with that, I, I really do want to extend our thanks again to the task force. We know how much work this is as you do it. I think, and we even, you know, as we do, and the city staff knows this best, when you're given a task, and then we expand the task. And we say, oh, we wanted you to look at these things. And then you come back and say like, oh, now we're going to add a bunch more. And we did that, and we thank you all for being up for taking on the additional work and continuing these conversations. It's a very important one, and one I'm sure we will continue as we're going through the current health crisis and on the other end of it. So thank you very much. And I'm sure we'll have more questions for you as we move forward with this. So enjoy the rest of your evening. Now we will move on to public comments. And we had, as we've been doing the last couple of weeks, people signed up ahead of time. Tonight, we have no voting items, so they're just general public comments this evening. And I'm just going to pull up the list here and see who is first. All right, technology is not my friend tonight. Ah, Mr. Thomas Parlin, are you with us?
I am with you. How are you guys doing this evening?
Good. Oh, and I forgot to mention, we are still doing our three minutes. So I, when you start, I will start timing you, so.
I will hope to not take that long. Hi, my name is Tommy Parlin, and I'm the Chair of the Arts and Humanities Commission for the City of Tacoma Park and Associate Professor Dance at the Community College of Baltimore County. I want to bring to the council's attention the 2019-2020 Annual Report, which you received yesterday. And just to highlight a few quick things when it comes since you're talking budget. My goal here is hopefully to convince you to keep our budget intact, if not increase it in some way, but please don't cut it. In this time of crisis during this pandemic, the arts are more important than ever. The arts will bring us together and bind us together as a community. As we exit out of this pandemic, I'm hoping, we're going to need that sense of arts and humanities work. You know, the poetry readings, the performances, the lectures, the film shows to help bring us all back together as Tacoma Park, yes? And throughout the state of Maryland, the arts is a $1.3 billion industry. And as we all know, Tacoma Park is very much considered an artist destination, not just for artists, but for presenting of the arts as well. And so I ask for the city council and the mayor's support to continue supporting the Arts and Humanities Commission and our local artists too, in this time, just like a lot of our other small businesses are economically not doing well. So any help and support we can receive, the arts community will be very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we have Mr. Randy Cohen.
Great, thank you. It's great to be with you all today and speaking support for the arts. Thanks to my councilmember Kostic. I want to thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, for your long-running funding of the arts. I was the first chair of the Arts and Humanities Commission. We helped establish it. Tacoma Park is a great arts community. It's rich with public art, poetry, culture, the poet laureate. It's home to so many artists and creative workers. When we support the arts, we're strengthening Tacoma Park socially, educationally, and even economically. These are benefits that persist even in difficult social and economic times. Clearly, distressing time in our community and around the world with more uncertainty ahead. When the crisis does end, however, the arts should be looked to as an essential tool in both economic recovery and reconnecting our communities. Getting people out of their houses and spending money at our local business is in restaurants, it's going to be key to jump-starting the economy. And this is what the arts do. They create social and economic opportunities. You know, attending the folk festivals, school plays, you know, visiting the exhibits at the municipal buildings, seeing concerts. The research shows that every time someone in Montgomery County attends an arts event, they spend $23, not including admission, on meals, parking, babysitting. This provides important revenue to our local businesses, energizes the downtown, promotes visitation, brings people to different parts and different neighborhoods of the city, puts people to work. But the arts also create opportunities to heal the isolation that's been caused by social distancing and us being all locked up. The arts unify our communities. Arts experiences are things we do together in shared and meaningful ways in public spaces. And the research shows the public understands this as well. Eighty-one percent of the population says arts are a positive experience in a troubled world. And I'll just say the last one, 72% of the population, the arts unify our communities. The arts are our greatest asset in recovering from this crisis. And doing everything we can to support the arts now will strengthen Tacoma Park later. Thanks for your time and the extra few seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Thank you very much. All right, next we have Jackie Crosetta. And apologies if I pronounced the last name wrong.
That was perfect. Thank you. The arts are more important than ever as we cope with the losses and challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. We turn to creative expressions for comfort, inspiration, and hope. The arts create sparks that engage our heads and hearts and connect us in profound ways. As you are aware, the arts and culture sector has been hit very hard by the pandemic. According to a survey by the Americans for the Arts, the economic impact of the pandemic has mounted to $4.5 billion. And instead of speaking in general terms of the importance of the arts and the need for support, I'd like to share with you the impact that my experience with the Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Commission has had on my career and life as an artist. In the summer of 2018, I had the pleasure of participating in the Fluid Dynamics Exhibition at the Tacoma Park Community Center. I spent hundreds of hours creating a site-specific installation of sculptural forms made of translucent starched cotton, steel, wire, and thousands of stitches for the atrium space. Throughout the exhibition, in the months of planning prior to the opening, the exhibiting artists received a tremendous amount of support from Brendan Smith, Arts and Humanities Coordinator for Tacoma Park. He coordinated participating artists' art inventories, developed the exhibition theme, title, and statement, created a brochure, wrote the press release, and promoted the exhibit and opening reception, in addition to operating the scissor lift to hang my suspended installation. Since installing nearly two years ago, I've experienced many ripples of professional growth and opportunities, as well as wonderful connections with community. Here are a few examples. I enjoyed the creative challenge of activating a large space with works light enough to hang with wires. We had an outstanding turnout at opening reception. The dialogue around my piece gave me the opportunity to connect with visitors in a meaningful way and helped me to move my work forward. The exhibit was reviewed in East City Art, tweeted about by Mark Jenkins, art critic for the Washington Post, and featured on the City of Tacoma Park television. After seeing my installation, two different curators extended exhibition opportunities. I was awarded a grant by the Arts and Humanities Council of Montgomery County, and I was invited to participate in the Arts and Foggy Bottom Biennial. I'm extremely grateful for my experience exhibiting at Tacoma Park Community Center. I've also benefited from seeing other exhibits there. They were beautifully curated and inspiring. Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Commission is a jewel worth protecting and supporting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mr. John Warren.
Hello. Yes, my name is John Warren. I'm the Director of the Publishing Program at George Washington University. I'm a publisher and also a musician, and I'm a member of the Arts and Humanities Commission here in Tacoma Park and a resident for the past seven years. I want to thank you, Mayor, and the city council for your support of the arts in the past. And I want to ask you for your continued support. I think that you all know that it's a very important part of what it means to be a community. Tacoma Park has a thriving art scene, as you know. And one thing that I do want to emphasize is that the Arts and Humanities Commission and Tacoma Park supports a very diverse range of arts and artists, public art, lectures, concerts, films, and, and other types of arts. And it's a very important part of our community. So I thank you for your continued support.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Ellen Zerbrig.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Stewart, and members of the city council. My name is Ellen Zerbrig, and I'm a board member and a singer with Orfeo Vocal Ensemble. We're an all-women's Balkan vocal ensemble and a nonprofit organization based in Montgomery County. Our mission is to share, perform, and teach the traditional music and culture of Bulgaria and the Balkans through interactive concerts and workshops. We've had the pleasure of working with Tacoma Park Arts twice, once in 2015, and once just last year. And I, I want to give them rave reviews. Tacoma Park Arts provides an amazing and diverse range of arts events, free to the community, many of which I've taken advantage of, and they are a pleasure to work with. Their sponsorship of our 2019 concert was a boon to the group, as is undoubtedly to other artists whose events they sponsor and organize. Tacoma Park Arts provided great support, including a wonderful venue and great publicity. We had a full house, children, adults, seniors, people were dancing in the aisles. And it gave us the opportunity to reach more people with our music, add to our mailing list for the future. And we also recruited a new member that night. It also supported our group through freewill donations, the stipend that they provide, and CD and craft sales after the concert. We think that Tacoma Park Arts gets great bang for its arts buck, and we hope you will continue to support them well into the future. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Sandra Moore.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sandy Moore, and I'm a volunteer with the Free Minds Book Club and Writing Workshop, a nonprofit organization that uses the transformative power of books and writing to inspire incarcerated youth in the adult criminal system. When they're released from prison, Free Minds members are there to provide a wide range of reentry support services, critical to ensure their successful transition to adult life back in our community. Only 9% of Free Minds members reoffend compared to 80% of youth who recidivate nationally. I coordinate a bi-monthly program that we hold here in Tacoma Park called Write Night that is regularly attended by between 50 and 80 volunteers and is supported by both the Tacoma Foundation and Seekers Church. At Write Night, we have an opportunity to read the powerful firsthand accounts of poet ambassadors recently released, recently released Free Minds members. We also read poetry penned by youth still behind bars and write encouraging comments. The comments are sent to them in prison. Brendan Smith heard about Write Night, and he seized the opportunity to invite Free Minds poet ambassadors to join the Third Thursday Poetry Series. I'm happy to be here tonight to represent Tara Liebert, co-founder and executive director of Free Minds, and read her statement about the importance of Tacoma Park's art initiatives, in particular, the monthly poetry series. From Tara, "We were thrilled and honored to participate in the Tacoma Park Arts Third Thursday Poetry Series. This was the first time our Free Minds poet ambassadors, who were all previously incarcerated, have been invited to share their poetry as featured poets in a dedicated art series. It held tremendous meaning as they were able to share their own poetry, as well as the work of Free Minds members still incarcerated in the DC jail and in federal prisons across the country. It was a powerful healing evening as the videos of those directly impacted by the criminal legal system were uplifted and recognized by an engaged audience. It was truly a united community and demonstrated the incredible ability of the arts to connect, heal, and transform. As Free Minds poet ambassador Nakoma shared that evening, writing poetry is the bridge that got me to where I am now. And we are so grateful to Tacoma Park for providing a platform to showcase personal and societal change." Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have to say, one of the downsides of having our council meeting on Wednesday nights is that's the same night. is that's the same night as Write Night, so.
They're meeting virtually right now. People are commenting on the poetry.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Sandy. Next, we have Bill Crandall.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bill Crandall. I'm an award-winning photographer, a full-time photography teacher for more than ten years, a non-award-winning musician, and a proud member of the Arts Commission. Our family moved here in 2017 for a community with arts woven into its fabric. The festivals, the radio station, the city arts events, the Arts Commission, the public art, the yard art, the open mics, the artist studios and workshops, one-of-a-kind music store, Ryzeom DC, just over the border, and much more. I'm a singer-songwriter. A few weeks ago, when we could still gather, I did a concert from my garage for neighbors, as well as a Facebook livestream. But I'm not alone. Just over here in my long branch neighborhood, there's the couple singing songs from their front stoop, the guy looping the experimental guitar sounds from his back porch, Carl Banner's classical music wafting from his window to the audience in the yard, the guy playing his trumpet almost every day from the empty parking lot at Flower and Carol, my neighbors that host songwriting circles. So many of my neighbors play in bands, teach art, make art. This is part of who and what we are and why I moved here. A place that has chosen art is a central part of our identity and our sense of ourselves. It's not an add-on or a luxury. It is us. It is also pretty rare. Since we moved here, I've hosted salons at my house for art and music, especially topical work that addresses the zeitgeist in some way. I feel the arts are more important than ever in helping us make sense of the world. These are tough times, but I believe strongly that the arts are what could save us. I mean, what else will? Politicians, no offense, business, celebrities, sports. Not to demonize any of those things, they all can be noble and have great roles to play in our lives. But who will stand up for greater insight, for deeper emotion, for complex nuanced reflections on our lives against propaganda and lies, against hate and ignorance and apathy? Artists do those things, and will keep doing it, but certainly not because it makes us rich. Who has been moved by a painting, or a poem, or a song, or a photograph? Or who has not been? I mean, we need these things, not because they will stop bad things from happening. That's pretty unlikely, but they will save us nonetheless. They save our souls, they make us resilient, they help us understand and to feel, they energize us, they elevate us, calm us, they reveal reality and help us counter reality at times with something a bit better. They bring us together and bring a kind of humane shape to how we perceive the world. I realize there are hard budget decisions to be made at this time, but I hope you will consider the arts as essential services. Let's make sure the arts are still here when we do return to some kind of new normal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Arthur David Olsen.
Arthur David Olsen, Herbie Hancock Avenue. Oddly enough, I never use the nickname Art. The city manager has mentioned that the full funding level for the equipment replacement reserve is over $800,000. This matches the roughly $820,000 figure I've determined. You will not be surprised that I support fully funding the reserve. So let me surprise you. It's time to rethink equipment replacement. As the city manager explained at a recent meeting, the city saves up toward the cost of replacements for long-life items. Since, on average, the city's equipment is about halfway through its life, the reserve ought to be about half the replacement cost. And though underfunding in recent years has left it somewhat short, it's in that neighborhood, about $3.8 million. The approach is best practice. The city could have more modest goals for the reserve to handle the short-term challenges of unexpected equipment losses and to avoid budget spikes in years of large outlets, such as when trash trucks are replaced. If you know me, you know that I've made a spreadsheet, done the math, had someone else look it over, and am happy to show you my work. If the city fully funds the reserve this year and commits to doing so in future years, having $1.3 million in reserve now is sufficient to project that the reserve does not go negative through the year 2080, as far into the future as I care to project. The reserve could be drawn down by as much as $2.5 million. A drawdown would be a one-time thing. It would not be in line with the city's policy to use it to meet ongoing expenses. It could be used to deal with our current situation, to fund mini-grants to businesses, to fund emergency aid to individuals, and to shore up the police employee retirement plan after recent market losses. We're faced with a pandemic and a massive downturn in the economy. As Councilmember Smith has observed, a business-as-usual approach will not work. I hope the council will consider fully funding the equipment replacement reserve this year, committing to doing so in the future, drawing down the reserve based on that commitment and a more limited purpose, and using the draw to fund responses to the current emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Roger Schlegel. And Mr. Schlegel had requested additional time, so he has five minutes this evening. Mr. Schlegel, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me? I'm Roger Schlegel from Allegheny Avenue in Ward Three. Good evening. I'm commenting on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma on the budget. And it's clear that we're facing a perfect storm with our budget this year, and that we need to make difficult choices as a community. A good part of this storm is of our own making. Over the past five years, we've steadily increased expenditures for operations. We've expanded our number of employees, even though our population has been steady because we're taking on new priorities without streamlining other functions. And to make ends meet, we've increased property taxes faster than inflation. And we haven't maintained our general fund operating reserve. Under the proposed budget, it would dwindle to just forty percent of what the ordinance requires without identifying any special situation that applies. And then comes the storm that we couldn't have predicted, which is this frightening pandemic and the massive sudden recession it has caused. The pandemic pushes us to find resources to help our most vulnerable residents, most especially those living in multifamily buildings who will need to self-isolate to protect their families and neighbors. The recession also means a huge loss of revenue from Steichen County transfers, as well as from local sources such as charges for services. And the proposed budget hasn't yet taken these factors into consideration. Based on the best research I can do, I forecast that we'll be missing out on at least ten percent of our general fund revenue, probably quite a bit more due to this pandemic. So it's becoming clear, we won't have widespread availability of a vaccine until fiscal year '22. Perhaps only five percent of the U.S. population has been infected so far. So we'll likely be seeing multiple waves of this pandemic with ongoing economic impacts. It was just sixteen days ago, which seems like forever, that the city manager expressed confidence that, based on the last recession, our revenues wouldn't face heavy impacts for three or four years. Based on the schedules for intergovernmental transfers, I conclude that our general fund balance will drop much sooner, within weeks or months. The city manager also suggested that our budget cushioned, is cushioned from recession impacts because the majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. That majority is just fifty-three percent. Will federally be available to bail out municipalities? We just don't know. So what to do? First task is to get a clearer picture of the future, develop informed forecasts of revenue shortfalls under low, medium, and high-impact scenarios. The second task is to identify funds to free up for pandemic assistance and to direct the city manager to reallocate staff time to meet emerging critical needs. The third task is to set up a tax rate that keeps vulnerable taxpayers from having to move away. Friends on our street who were Tacoma Park residents since the early eighties moved out last fall because they couldn't afford the taxes anymore. The newer residents who are struggling in this recession would have real trouble making higher mortgage payments starting in July. The fourth task is to take the revised revenue and expenditure forecasts and calculate how much we need to cut. I think we will be looking at something in the range of fifteen percent. So tweaking the proposed budget on the margins will cut sufficiently. And the final task is to figure out how to distribute the pain of those cuts fairly and sustainably. Begin with postponing capital expenditures, yes. We recognize that personnel costs will have to be reduced too. How far can we get by reducing salary increases to match stabilized rent increases? How far can we get by freezing salaries, by reducing hours and making furloughs? And if we have to cut positions, which would we be looking at anyway if we were setting out to right-size our operations? Tim Mail and Seth Grimes have put forward some creative and detailed proposals. Ideally, the councils should set priorities and overall targets, and then let the city manager and department chairs come back with options that work within those parameters. Wherever possible, cuts should harmonize with long-term priorities, and we shouldn't rely strictly on creative accounting or stopgap measures that only postpone the hard decisions. In all these tasks, the overarching principle is that we must make firm distinctions between our wants, which many of us can't, which we really can't pay for, and our needs, which are tied to our core values and obligations. There's no way to spin this and say it will turn out all right on its own. There are times in life when we have to be hard-nosed budget panelists. And for many of us as individuals, that's every day. But for all of us now as a community, now is one of those times. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Diane Curran. Diane, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. You can hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Diane Curran. I am president of the Board of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. Thank you for this opportunity to update you on the Co-op's ongoing response to the COVID-19 crisis. I'm standing in tonight for Mike Houston, our general manager, who had another obligation at the Montgomery County Food Council. He really appreciates your support for all we've been doing and would have liked to be here himself. Since the COVID-19 pandemic began, the Co-op has responded to each new phase of the ever-changing crisis. Throughout March, shoppers flocked to the Co-op, and we saw record sales. We responded by donating $6,000 to local nonprofits, including Crossroads, Manah, and the Tacoma Park City Emergency Fund. Our commitment to our staff never wavered as we introduced stricter safety procedures, ensured all staff got their regular complement of hours, and even hired temporary workers in need of pay. On March 24th, when Governor Hogan issued his first stay-at-home order, the Co-op took decisive action to protect our staff and shoppers. We closed the doors to the public and began a transition to online shopping and contactless pickup on the West Side parking lot. Our online store launched March 28th, and was met with tremendous customer demand. Our online store gets better and more efficient, more accurate every day. Going forward, we are committed to providing a shopping experience that comes as close as possible to shopping in our storefront. Above all, we are committed to keeping our staff and our customers as safe as possible. We are also committed to serving our community as broadly as possible. This week, we were thrilled to partner with Crossroads Fresh Checks Program to provide double spending on fresh fruits and vegetables for SNAP participants. We believe that everyone deserves access to help purchase food, and this program will serve our community members who need it most at this time. As the health risk of contact between grocery store workers and customers grows, we are proud to be the first United States grocery store to prioritize workers and customer safety by switching to a pickup-only model. Our vision and our foresight have been recognized by the national news media, including the Washington Post, CNN, and Good Morning America. I'd like to close with a personal note from Mike. Mike says, "Through long days and nights, I am proud of this store and the community. I am acutely aware that we are in this together with our members and shoppers, and we are both relying on one another in uncertain times. The messages of support and kindness are heard and appreciated. And even though we don't get to see your faces every day, we feel your love. We are committed to working hard to get people the food they need and to do it in a safe and sustainable way for everyone. We're proud to help Tacoma Park once again lead the way and show that we can balance the pressures of providing essential services with care for human beings. Thank you very much for your consideration and for your ongoing support, and I'll be sending you..."
Sorry. All right, Diane. Thank you. Perfect. Our last speaker tonight is Sean Henley. Sean, are you ready?
Yes. Hi, my name is Sean Henley, and I work in the Gardens Department at Public Works, and I'm the president of Ask Me Local 3399. I first want to thank Patty Malin for speaking at last week's council meeting and highlighting the work being done remotely by city staff. I'd like to say a few words about the essential employees still coming into work for the city. Today, one of our trash truck drivers shared with me pictures of several thank-you signs made by residents that he'd seen along the route. We're all very appreciative of the different ways residents have shown their support at any time, but especially during this health crisis. The majority of Public Works and all of the dispatchers have continued to work a full schedule since this crisis began. Commuting to and fro as less and less people leave their homes. The trash and recycling is still picked up, mulch delivered, green spaces and city vehicles still maintained, and emergency calls still fielded from the confines of the Police Communications Office. And I realize, just thinking about this, that if I am leaving out any, there are still some essential tasks. This is not all-encompassing. But the fact is, in doing this, we are exposing ourselves and our loved ones to a higher risk. This morning, a petition signed by essential employees was submitted to the city administration requesting hazard pay as compensation for the risks we're facing. We're anticipating a response from the city manager this coming Friday. I believe the administration can find means to compensate us as it has been with the police department for the past month or six weeks. Hopefully, I can call into the next council meeting with some good news of a resolution to this matter. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much, Sean. All right, next, we have written comments that were submitted that will be read by the city clerk.
Yes, I only have two comments, and these both are related to the arts program. So Greta Errig has commented, "As a longtime Tacoma Park resident and teaching artist working within the city, I want to encourage the city council to consider increased funding for the arts. As a performer and as an audience member, I have long participated in the city's diverse arts projects, including but not limited to We Are Tacoma performances, Thursday night poetry readings, vintage movie nights, monthly poetry workshops, the Outdoor Piano Project, street festivals, and many of the multi arts collaborations spearheaded by then-poet laureate Ann Becker. The arts are not merely a nicety in our community, they are good for our collective and individual economies. They create social bonds, and they support the mental health and development of all residents, young and old. I personally know of several residents whose lives were saved from addiction and suicide by interfacing with the arts. Please consider increasing funding now and over the next several years. During this difficult time, we need arts more than ever. Thank you." And the next one is from Buddy Daniels. He's just commented, "As I said last week, I realize that this time it's very difficult to make budget decisions, but I hope you will decide to fully fund the Arts and Humanities programs. The programs are an important part of the Tacoma Park community and part of Tacoma Park's identity. The exhibitions, film screenings, poetry readings, performing arts and lectures at the community center are very well-attended and have become part of the city's culture. Many of the programs around the city give people a chance to have cultural experiences, enjoy music, poetry, and murals. So again, I hope you will fully fund the Arts and Humanities programs in the upcoming budget." And that's the last comment.
Thank you so much. All right, now we will move on to council comments. If any of my colleagues have comments, please raise your hand. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Just two quick things. One, I appreciate all the comments from those who spoke in... those who spoke in support of arts funding, and that's certainly something we'll have to take very seriously when we get into the budget. So I'm pleased to see all those folks stepping forward to speak this evening. The second thing, and this relates to what Sean Henley was talking about regarding the potential for hazard pay. And I did mention this in the previous council meeting last week. I think that in addition to the police, which I think are quite deserving of it, we should look seriously at whether there are other staff who ought to also receive hazard pay. And you know, part of the challenges is not just the work they do and whether they interact directly with the public, but there's a lot of cleaning and other kinds of sanitation activities. And then in addition, they have to take positions, which means that they run the risk of being exposed to the virus when they're out among the population. So for those who don't have the ability, because of the inherent nature of their jobs, stay home as we are here and just communicating electronically through our computers and so on. I do think it's something that should be considered, and I urge the city manager to take a look at that and to let us know if there are aspects that we should be aware of or that we could help contribute in order to make some version of that proposal by Mr. Henley happen. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Smith, we can't hear you. Let me...
I think I'm unmeeted now. I just wanted to start by saying that it's really heartbreaking that we even have to talk about another tragedy.
I'm sorry, it was still running.
That has to do with COVID-19, but when I heard last night what had happened, you know, it just made me speechless. It just wanted me to reiterate to the community that this health emergency is real, that people need to take care of themselves, that social distancing is not something that just we're putting out there for some people to follow and others don't have to follow it. Everybody should follow it. And for the family, I mean, this tragedy will change them forever. And I hope residents can just give something to the GoFundMe page that is circulating throughout the city so that we can show that, you know, these residents care, that we care about this family, that they are important to us, and not just think about it today, but three months from now, six months from now, and, you know, five years from now, so that they can stay whole. And Mahaerit, you know, that is attending Blair, she's a rock star in our community. We need to look at how we can take care of her future education, set up a scholarship fund for her, because, you know, this is a pivotal time of what can happen for this family. You know, great things can happen for them, or, you know, something that's not so great. So I call upon everybody to try to help them during this time of need. I also would like to thank Small Things Matter for making another delivery of food in Ward 5 at Cambridge and Winslow this past Friday. Residents really appreciate it. So I also want to thank Difference Makers for giving out gift cards to residents at Essex House. This health emergency, I don't think people really understand how it is devastating people's, you know, whether it's food insecurity, paying their rent, just having money in their pocket. So whatever you can do to help people, help our businesses, please continue to do it, especially our immigrant community. They need our help. And if we don't stand in the void to help them, no one else will. So thank you very much. I hate to have to, you know, start off my council comments on such a serious situation, but please, find it in your heart, in your mind, to help this family. And I do hope to God this is the last one, but because of COVID-19, I think that we will see others. So take care of yourselves and take care of your neighbors. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, my other phone just completely died, so I'm on a new phone. Okay, let's see. Councilmember Searcy.
Good evening, everyone, and I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Smith, and my thoughts and prayers are with the family at this time, and definitely want to encourage those who can to give. I have a few updates today. First, I want to thank the Tacoma Park Police, who came out in support of the food distribution or giveaway at Megamart last Friday. Some may have seen on the news, but regionally, Megamart had planned to give out free food, which is great in theory, but created very long lines in our Crossroads Megamart. I'd heard that the line had gotten as long as 1,000 people trying to get access to free food. So what Councilmember Smith said is very, very real. There are a number of residents in our community who are in desperate need of food and resources. And keeping in mind our immigrant populations, who also typically wouldn't qualify for a number of the benefits that are being offered. So they wouldn't be eligible for things like a stimulus check, and they wouldn't be eligible for different types of social service dollars that are being made available. For many, it's going to require us in the city thinking of novel ways to not only identify who they are, but get them the resources that they need. And so I think that's important for us to keep that point in mind as we're talking through the budget as well, because it may mean it hurts a little bit to not do some of the things that you enjoy, but it could really change and save lives to be able to redirect money to those who are in dire straits right now. So again, just want to thank the police chief and the police that were able to come out and maintain social distancing and try to keep the crowds under control. I also want to thank the city manager and the Crossroads Executive Director, Kaylee Vino, for getting on the phone and trying to figure out what was happening, and the fact that we have an ability to kind of all communicate and reach the manager in record speed for that particular store. It's just a testament to the important relationships that we're starting to forge with our businesses. So again, just very appreciative for all hands being on deck. Crossroads Farmers Market is still happening on Wednesdays. Had an opportunity to go out today, and I purchased all of my produce that I needed, and I was able to get lunch for like 25 bucks. It was great! So I definitely want to encourage folks to just take a little time on Wednesdays when you might be working from home, to put on a mask. They have a hand washing station, so you walk in, you can wash your hands, you get your stuff, and all of the vendors know how to just put whatever you ask for in your bag, and then you wash your hands on the way out. So they've really taken a lot of precautions to try to keep folks safe. And all of the farmers that are there have a great assortment of produce. They're offering double SNAP benefits, so it really does provide an affordable way to get some of the produce and things that you may need without having to venture out to a full grocery store. So definitely want to encourage folks to go to the Crossroads Farmers Market on Wednesdays on Ann Street from 11:00 to 3:00. Lastly, I am having, we're going to see how this is going to work, but I'm doing Zoom office hours tomorrow at 7:00. In my update, the link, but I will re-forward my link out to folks. And so I want to encourage people to come out or to call in and chat with me if you have any questions about the budget or any other activities that are happening in the city or with the council. One thing I forgot to mention last week, we are nearing the phase of design for the Hillwood Manor Playground. So we have our architect, we're like set, but we need residents who are interested in being actively involved and working to make sure that the word gets out when we start to actually have design meetings about the playground to sign up. I sent out a link for residents in Hillwood Manor and different groups, organizations, to let me know if you're willing to serve as kind of a point of contact. And so what we're hoping to do is to send the list of points of contact to the county, particularly to our architect, who will work with county community engagement staff. And they're starting to think of ways to, even in times of social distancing, to come up with some approaches to start having conversations around the new Hillwood Manor Playground. So again, just want to encourage everyone to let me know if you are interested in either serving as a neighborhood point of contact or just being looped into future design meetings for the playground. And I'm looking to turn around that list by Friday, so please, 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 sign up or shoot me an email, and I can make sure that you're in the loop. So that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kovar, your hand is up. Did you have something else to say? Okay, then I'm going to Councilmember Kostick.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for the comments tonight, the people who came out and have spoken with us, as well as shared thoughts regarding the budget, as well as supporting others in the community. And I want to thank Councilmember Smith for his comments and the reality that I think we're all facing. And as we are touched more as a community by this virus and by the economic impacts, it becomes much more real, and I think is something that we are all struggling with and will continue to struggle with. So I wanted to thank everyone, first of all, for their comments and the many ways that people are working to support each other during this hard time. I also wanted to let people know that I have another virtual office hours event coming up next Thursday from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. I've had two of them now, and we've had pretty good turnout. I think about five people at both of the office hour events. It's been a great opportunity for me to hear from people, and I'm available then, but of course, always available at other times as well. And we also had a Neighborhood Association meeting for SS Carroll Neighborhood. We tried a virtual meeting recently, and it was a great success. We were very lucky to have both Mike Houston and Laura Barclay speak at the virtual meeting, and we got to hear a little more about what some of the struggles are for the businesses in the Old Tacoma area and in the Junction. And then also to hear from Mike some of the things that Diane mentioned tonight with regard to their response from the co-op to the virus and to protecting staff, as well as the ways that the co-op has been contributing to the community. So it was a great opportunity to meet, and I want to thank everyone who made that possible, as well as, I'm hoping to see if there are other neighborhoods as well that are interested in meeting, you know, just so we can have a chance to chat and connect virtually if we can't connect in person. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Mendavala.
Yes, thank you. I was deeply moved by the tragic events of this week. And as someone I talked to said today, this has become very real and very close to home for many people. So echoing what everybody else has said, wear your masks, take care of yourselves and everybody else around you, and thank you for all of what all you are doing to support each other, from garbage worker signs to singing on your porch, to donations, to all the things people are doing as a community. It's pretty special. On the subject of of budget meetings and neighborhood meetings, Zoom does seem to be the trick. I think Google Hangouts didn't work as well for me, but the Zoom meeting yesterday did. There will be a Neighborhood Association meeting with me on the budget next Tuesday. We're trying to set up something for Woodland Avenue and any other neighborhood in Ward 2 that wants to do this. Just get in touch with me, and we'll set something up. And last, I think the, and I wanted to thank the, two things. I wanted to thank the Arts and Humanities Commission members for coming out and sharing your thoughts. That was really uplifting. And I think the city manager is going to talk a little bit about Earth Day and the energy bingo. Want to point out that there's also information on that page about things you can do at home to make your home more energy efficient while you are stuck in it and hopefully have a little extra time to do that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I just have a couple of updates. One, I continue to be on calls each week with representatives from the county regarding the COVID-19 crisis, as well as at the state. The calls with the county occur on Thursday afternoons, and the state calls occur on Friday. So they've been getting a little bit more regular on the time. If there are specific things my colleagues would like me to emphasize or to ask questions on, please let me know. I just wanted to make sure, remind everyone that we're doing that. We continue to emphasize the need for assistance to cities on both of those calls, as well as specifically regarding our small business needs. And we've advocated in the past for more information for those who live in multifamily buildings, as well as troubles that happened at the beginning with the unemployment benefits and applying for that. Next, this afternoon, I was on a meeting, an emergency meeting of the COG board, at which time we discussed the COVID-19 health crisis and committed to working together in coordination as a region on COVID-19, and particularly when the time comes, to plan for the reopening. As the public health officer who was on the call today talked to us about it, and I can share the materials with my colleagues, the need to think about, this is a faucet that will be slowly turned on and could be turned off at different times. And so he had different questions that need to be asked, and a very interesting set of ways and criteria to be thinking about, how do we know we're going to be ready to slowly open up again? So when I receive those materials, I'll share them with you. One of the other things that our city manager has informed us in the past of is that there will be a Chief Administrative Officers Group that will be meeting from around the region to discuss these issues. And I'm glad to say that I know our city manager will play an integral part in that. The next thing is tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m., we're doing a town hall with County Councilmember Tom Hucker. This will be on Zoom. I will be joined with our city manager, our deputy city manager, as well as our Economic Development Manager, Samara Cipgane. And so I hope people are able to join that. Maybe they can bop back and forth between Councilmember Searcy's meeting and the town hall. Maybe they can pop back and forth between Councilwoman Piercey's meeting and the town hall. Information about how to sign up for that is on Facebook, but if you need the direct link, please just send me an email. And those are all my updates and I'm going to turn over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. First, I want to note that city staff and myself have been doing an enormous amount of COVID-19 work. So even as we're trying to do budget, today it felt like all COVID-19. And it's, it's been that, for me, most of the past few weeks. To pick up on what the mayor mentioned, I actually will be on a phone call this Friday with the other, with some other chief administrative officers to talk about that recovery coordination. And I was on a presentation today also through CAG on how we monitor the situation to, so that we can kind of predict what might be happening in different situations and what that might mean for recovery and reopening. Have to say, it looks like it's going to be a very long time. You know, I appreciate the analogy of the faucet that turns on and you may have to turn off. And I think we will see that. But we really are looking at a different kind of lifestyle for a while. And we have to figure out how that, how that works and what, how that affects us. I just want to note, frankly, my staff is really tired. And so I'm just sharing that it's, it's been a tough time. Today is Earth Day and as Councilmember DiBala mentioned, it is a, it's a special day. It's the 50th anniversary of it. I put on Twitter this morning, my memory of riding in a bike parade in Pocatello, Idaho on the first Earth Day. And my mom was a behind the scenes organizer doing the food and we had Earth Day displays and we had, she had recycling stations set up along with a variety of other folks in our community. And so, you know, it's, it's been with us a long time. That care has been with us a long time. It's really tough this year with the pandemic, at the same time that we're really facing climate change and trying to put those two things together, I think is a challenge for us. To be positive about it and to really keep working on it, do play the Energy Bingo game. I've got the link on my manager reports. It'll go out in the, in our various social media and ways to access it. So play along, do some of the activities, help us take the beauty of the earth and enjoy it. Wanted to pick up on the note of the passing of our community member last night and how difficult it is for everybody. Members of this particular family are known throughout the community and so it, it breaks our heart. I also want to remind that there's many people we don't know, particularly kind of a little bit more in some of the people who live alone, otherwise don't have some of these connections. And, and we think a lot about them and we care a lot about them. One of the things that's been really tough is that we want to come together to mourn. We want to connect, to support each other. And during this pandemic, we cannot do that physically. We have to keep those spaced distances. We have to find some good Tacoma Parkway to show our interconnectedness without being close together. And so yes, there are donations, there are songs, there's letters, a variety of things. Maybe we can come up with some things that are more, you know, kind of uniquely Tacoma Park that can help celebrate that. And I know there will be some coming together for the passing of our friend who lived in Essex House, but there will also be, there's, there's going to be more. And so we do need to find a way to share and love and, and be a community. And I think each of us has cried at some point in the last couple of weeks with this difficulty. And, and we have to support each other also in that grief. I did appreciate, and I'll switch to arts. I did appreciate the comments from a number of the artists in our community or people who are on our Arts and Humanities Commission. They have sent to the council and I have attached to my notes today their annual report. It's, it's short, but it's got beautiful examples of the work that they did in the 2019 to 2020 time period. One thing that I have appreciated in this past year is that it has really broadened the kind of activities that they do. I think they took to heart their commitment to cultural diversity that they put in the cultural plan that was updated by the council and really did look at race equity as part of a component of the arts that needs to be celebrated and used. And I've been watching the arts here for a long time. This year, this past year was more interesting than ever in terms of that connection, in terms of those connections. So I urge people to look at the annual report and read it. And, and you know, I think those activities are very valuable to help to find that sense of peace that we sometimes need or challenge that we sometimes need. On the negative side, I did put a, I did pause some of our art installations that were proposed. We had three projects for which funds were available in this current budget. They've been postponed right now because of the uncertainty related to the pandemic. The three projects are the Lincoln Avenue mural, the structure, the sculpture that was proposed for Halton Lane, which has not been started, designed yet, and an effort to restore the B Y Morrison Pavilion mural, which is in bad shape right now. I have not necessarily spent that money somewhere else. I want to have that as part of the discussion of the budget. I want to make sure that we have financial flexibility for this city. I also do think that arts are an integral part of our budget. And so as we go forward and look at next year, how do we have them connected with a number of the activities that are essential to, to occur so that there are better projects? And that's something that we'll have to look at one by one. But I appreciate the economic impact that our artists have in our community and the, also just, if you're really miserable at home, it's really good to have some heart. And I appreciate that, that, all that they bring to Tacoma Park. The end of my comments. Any other comments? Questions?
Great. All right. Well, thank you for that. And as always, the city manager comments will be posted on the website so people can go back and refer to them. Our last item tonight is a work session to update us on our discussion of the stormwater fee structure and do we have Ms. Braithwaite with us?
I think she's around, but I can go ahead and start. So it seems like a really long time ago, but we came to the council on February 5th and February 19th to talk about the stormwater rate structure. And it could have been a year ago at this point. But during that time, there was a real discussion about the idea of moving to a, a fee structure that was based on the square foot, square footage of impervious surface on a property, charging $25 per 500 square feet of that impervious surface. And what would it take to let the public know about what that might mean for their particular property, provide a notice for a public hearing about that? Think about for those folks for whom the rate would actually go up, some kind of phasing system. I did put in the proposed budget for FY '21, $50,000 as an opportunity to phase in some of those higher priced rates for property owners of single family homes. The pandemic hit. We did not get out a notice to people. We did not have an opportunity as staff to prepare that information. It's been more restricted to have council meetings about, with public hearings at this time. And so it did not go anywhere. That said, we have known the information for some time that our January 2019 report from the consultants Black and Vets showed that we have not been charging people the rights, right amounts for their property. And in particular, that commercial and institutional property, properties are paying a larger share of the total budget in the system. The city attorney has advised that the way that our, the way the state law is and the way our code is, that we should be moving to something that's a, since we use impervious surface as the proxy for the impact of stormwater on the stormwater system, that we should have closer nexus between what we're charging and the impact of that runoff into the system. And so we have taken a little bit of time to try to think about, what do we do in a short period of time, particularly because the, the city council will need to, as part of its budget ordinances, pass a rate for the stormwater system. It's one of the four budget ordinances that you will vote on next month. So Daryl Braithwaite and I have, have done some kind of crunching about options, looked at liability issues as we go through this. And there are several different possibilities that I'd like to just raise with the council this evening. One is, we could simply keep the same system, the same pay, get the $700,000 in total revenue using the $92 base charge and recognize that there's some unfairness with that, but that's a simple answer. Another option is that we can move forward with the proposed rate structure, which I think there's a lot of support for in theory, which is to really represent what's the impact of a particular property and the stormwater from a particular property on the overall system and charge the $25 per 500 square feet of impervious surface. Some people's, about a third of the single family homes will have a lesser charge than they do now of the $92. Two thirds would have an increased charge and most commercial and institutional property owners would have less of a charge. Again, we have $50,000 that I had included to help smooth some of those increased prices. And we had talked a couple of different ways to do that phasing in the February 19th city council work session. I, we, I had originally come up with a variety of options of trying to, and I've talked to a number of council members about this. Maybe we charge half and then we adjust at mid-year to make a correction in the second half of, because the stormwater fee charge shows up in the property tax billing, which happens twice a year, trying to come up with some kind of system that, that's a messy system and it doesn't allow for a public hearing first, really, that would be, I think, the more appropriate way to do that. But it is an option. The other, Ms. Braithwaite reminded me this morning, like, well, we can go back to one of the recommendations of the Black and Vets study, which was to keep the equivalent rate unit system that we have now, where the, there's an average listed for residential, single family residential properties and then is prorated for commercial and institutional, but with a more accurate information. And what that would do is change what we say is an average impervious surface area. The current system, which was done when I first started working here, I think '96 or something like that, said that a property, average, single family residential property had an impervious surface area of 1,228 square feet. When we had the study done, the better analysis, that, that amount, that average amount really is 2,116 square feet. So it's really much larger than we had anticipated. If you use that equivalent rate unit, residential unit system with the larger and more accurate impervious surface square footage, that, but then you still manage to get the $700,000 that we need for the stormwater system, then the flat feet rate would increase from the $92 that we have to $108.47. I mean, I would say $108.50 because it's easier, but essentially just over $108. And then the advantage of that is that the commercial and institutional property owners would be paying a fairer share, a lesser share, a fairer share of the system, which helps meet our legal concerns. It also may be a way to help our commercial and businesses handle situations in a very difficult year with the pandemic. The, we still, again, have that $50,000 I set aside that could help offset for the single family homeowners, that $108.50. And in fact, if you took that money and you split it among the, the over 3,600 single family properties, it would bring down the property, the cost by 1350 to, so that it would be $95 for a residential property as opposed to 92, at least for this first year. So I tried a variety of different options to try to talk out what might be an approach in a really tough time, in a very tough time period, to have some answer for what do we adopt in a budget ordinance, just, you know, four weeks from now. So, Daryl Braithwaite, is there something that you'd like to add? I just tried, I may have missaid something as I tried to go through this quickly.
No, I think you captured it all. I think in, you know, the, because we weren't able to finalize with the council the rate structure we wanted to implement, I think we're looking at a couple of options. I think we would recommend, given the time and that's upon us, that we could most simply mirror the current structure, but change the rate to match what the impervious area is. And then continue the public outreach and discussion that we had discussed the last time we met with the council about a way to change the system from a base rate that all single families would be charged the same to one in which that reflected the impervious area and gave some different rates for those folks that had a larger impervious area versus smaller. One of the things I wanted to add is that the planning office has been able to digitize a interactive stormwater fee map and that will be appearing on the city, city webpage soon, similar to what they produced with the tax rate information for the county years ago. This will enable people to take a look at a map, look at their property, click on it, see what the impervious area is, based on the Black and Beach Study, and what the proposed stormwater rate structure would be if we were to have gone with a $25 unit fee per 500 square foot of impervious area. So that'll be available to continue the discussion. But I think in the interest of arriving at a budget figure for this upcoming fiscal year and knowing the revenue that's needed, and there's a whole timeline related to getting that billing information to the county, which does the invoicing for us on the tax bills, we need to establish a fee structure that can be readily communicated to the public. And I think, given the constraints, having one that follows what we're currently doing is probably the simplest in terms of passing on that information. But we, we are interested for a number of reasons in looking at a tiered structure for the future, so that we could provide a little more equity across the board, single family and commercial and institutional properties paying based on their actual impervious area.
So Mayor, I'd like to perhaps turn it over to the council to see if they've got some questions about this. I think we don't have a lot of timelines, so I'm glad we're talking about it tonight. But I do want to, I do recognize also that in some respects, just, you know, it's kind of throwing it at everybody and, and trying to figure out how we move forward is, is a challenge.
Great. All right. So we can open it up. Does anyone have any questions for the city manager or head of public works at this point? Or comments on this? As the city manager said, we'll, you know, we need to digest this, but we are, we are also going to need to make a decision as we're doing the budget over the next couple of weeks. And so Councilwoman DiBala?
Yes, thank you. I'm looking at some materials we got a while ago about who pays the multifamily commercial and institutional fees. And the bulk of the fees are, understanding that, that as a total, that they may... And the bulk of the fees are, understanding that, that as a total, that they may be paying more than, than is, than, than, than is that the recommendation from the Black and Beach is that, is that as a group they pay more, but the bulk of them don't pay very high fees. And there's a few at the top end that pay pretty significant fees. Is there such a thing as, as who those top groups are? And whether there's any way to, I don't know if there's any way to adjust just those fees, stick with the current system for this year. Here's what I'm thinking. Stick with the current system for this year, move toward the current, to the new system that we were talking about, start moving now, but it, but have it be implemented next year. And in the meantime, if there is a need to help any of the bigger folks, who are they and would they actually need some help in this current economic crisis? Is the stormwater fee that significant a burden for them, for those eight plus another five that are at the top end?
I can't, I can't speak to the individuals. I will tell, say a couple.
Yeah, I know you don't know. Now, go ahead.
But, well, I think that, I think that the, you know, we certainly, that was certainly one of the things we thought about, that, you know, maybe there's some ways that we offset something for a couple entities that are particularly out of whack. I think the biggest issue is staff time to think about this and work on.
Okay.
I, you know, I'm, I'm taking people after 14-hour days and then saying, oh, can you switch and think stormwater with me? I mean, that's just really hard. And so part of this is just, the amount of time to think it through is just a little tough. But I think that if there, you know, if there's clearly something that's, you know, there is possibility that we could just set aside some funds that if it's a, if somebody identifies it as a hardship, that we deal with it. I mean, that's something we could do.
And I, I just want to add, in terms of the actual billable unit, we are so heavily, heavily residential of the almost 4,000 billable parcels in our stormwater fee system, 3,500 are single-family residential. So the, the vast majority of who pays our stormwater fee, they're 88% of the billable units, and it represents about 56% of what the revenue was actually generated. So even though there's a heck of a lot more residences that are impacted by the stormwater, just based on the number of single-family properties, they still represent just over half of the revenue that's generated by the stormwater fee. Commercial properties represent about 3% of the number of billable entities, but reflect 13% of the, of the revenue generated. Because this is all tax bill-based, we have, you know, exact information about who pays what currently and about who pays what based on a proposed change. So we certainly can identify those people. However, as you can probably guess, the top end was the college and the university. Washington Venice Hospital, Washington Venice University, they're the largest landowners. They're obviously going to have the largest fee by far. They're in the $10,000 and $12,000 range for their annual fee. What kind of, you know, assistance we could give to them is probably not necessary, I would assume. And then in addition to that, you know, multifamily represents the next big chunk at 211 properties. They're a little less than 5% of, you know, point, point, yeah, 5% of the total number of, of billable parcels and about 13% of the revenue. So again, this is really heavily weighted towards single-family properties in, in terms of the number of properties impacted. But the way the funds come in, it's, it's very much skewed to multiple, multiple areas.
Thank you. That does address my question, that the top few, if it's the college and the university, as you point out, what are, what would be, be able to do with their bills to assist them? Yeah, maybe not. So, thank you.
Next, we have Councilwoman Circe.
Hello. So, I don't know if it's late, my brain is just not working. I just want to make sure I, I'm, I'm fully understanding, you know, the, the issues that we are trying to address. Because I kind of felt like there were a few things that was happening at the same time when we were discussing this earlier. One was the fact that our, you know, commercial and institutional properties, the amount of imperme, impermeable surface or the square footage was kind of off, right? Like, it was higher.
No, I'm sorry. Let me, let me be clear. We have accurate information and had accurate information pretty much for those properties. It's just that we didn't have good, accurate information so much for the single-family properties. And so the way that it got calculated is that right now, the commercial, institutional, multifamily properties, currently they pay a total of 380,000 of the $700,000 in revenue. But the right amount should be just 253,000. So that's $126,000 more than they probably should fairly be paying. And so part of this is how do we adjust for that inequity? And, and that's a big question.
But it wasn't that their actual square footage was inaccurately calculated.
Right. It was, it was tweaked a little bit because we got more accurate information, but it wasn't off as much as the single-family homes.
Okay. So with this current proposal, what we're talking about is the possibility of a flat rate. But for commercial properties, they would pay based on the actual square footage that they have, which we, you know, was around about what we had before, but we tweaked it a little bit based on the new data.
Correct.
Okay.
And the new evaluation that Black and Beach was able to do, the, the change in our base rate, our equivalent residential unit, really reflects the improved data set. What we had before was usually, was using basic county information, property, property size. And so what they were able to do now is have a much more refined data set that provided a much broader analysis of impervious area. So instead of 1,200 square feet being the average, the average is 2,100 square feet for impervious area. And since the commercial properties and all non-residential were based on, where their actual impervious area was divided by that base unit, instead of 1,200, now it's going to be 2,100. So their actual fee payment would be reduced unless the rate was changed.
Okay. And so that, that helps me out a little bit. So that I understand that if we were to go with the flat rate for a single property owner, right? Everyone's paying the same rate. But for a single property owner, it would go up because it's higher than what it was before. But for a commercial properties, even though the, we kind of would need to see what would happen with them, but because the rate has gone up, but their actual square footage has gone down, it could just kind of depend on how things shake out for them. Or is there going to be a, a net higher rate for them?
We think all the commercial and any, and all non-residential property will see a reduction in their fee.
Okay, okay, okay. And so for the single family, so now I got that part. Sorry. Thank you for bearing with me. So for the single-family homeowners, I, I completely understand how some of the, the challenges associated with the flat, like trying to identify the flat rate and trying to, you know, basically trying to acclimate people to the idea of some of these large jumps that would happen if we based it on their actual impervious surface. Some kind of, I'm like, oh, we might just want to kind of kiss this one, keep it a little simple, just to kind of get through this budget cycle and then try to make that tweak later. But I'm still unclear about what maybe that 50K would do if much for the average household. And I don't know if that's something we would necessarily want to talk about today or as we're kind of talking through the budget. You know, is it something that makes more sense to, you know, push in the general fund, try to lower everyone's overall tax rate versus trying to push it in terms of a rebate on the actual stormwater fee for, you know, the next payment? So.
So I think there's a couple of things there. One is we've, we've intentionally not done this through the tax, the city tax rate because many of the stormwater properties that pay stormwater fee are non-taxable. And so that's why, that's why we have tried to kind of keep a clean line between what we do for the tax rate versus what we do for the stormwater fee. Now, obviously, a single-family property owner is going to be dealt with both, and, and so they're thinking about those as money, both. But that's, there has been a bit of a line related to that. We, part of this could be just, you know, how much does the council want to subsidize from the general fund to keep the $92 rate that is now a flat rate until you redo it? Or do you want to do it a little, you know, because I just picked the number and put in the budget of 50,000 as a way to help shave, you know, shave this off. You could pick a slightly larger number and not have the people pay $95, have them pay, just keep the 92, realizing you're subsidizing a little bit more. Do recognize that as we, if we are able to move, not this year, but a future year, to that 500-square-foot base unit instead of a flat rate unit, some people's payments will go down. Some people would only be paying $25. Some people would only be paying $50. So, you know, that is something that I think is a fairness issue for them at some point. The, part of this is just trying to decide how, how much can we do within a couple of weeks? And, and what number do you want to see single-family property owners pay for that stormwater fee? And I think that's, that really is a call for you to determine.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
I'd just like to piggyback on what Councilwoman Circe was saying, because I think I was having the same thoughts in terms of, what is that, $50,000 really, if we put it towards the stormwater fee? What does it do for the individual household? And one of the things I was also thinking of is if we do go in this direction of a flat, continuing the flat fee this year and potentially increasing it just a bit, if we did subsidize it this year, that's something that we may have to do again next year. And so I just want to think about that. Like, is it a small increase this year of, what, $10 or $12? And then next year, if we can, if we do have the time to switch to the, the gradated system, then some people will get rebates, as we talked about. Some people will pay a little bit more. But my concern is with everything that's going on right now and everything we have to do, and the educate, we, or when we spoke about this the last time, we knew there was going to have to be a lot of outreach. Some people are going to contest their new rate. We're going to have to, like, set up a system for that and everything. If we're not ready for that next year, then we just have this, we, we face the same thing again. And then it's like, are we going to do another $50,000 in terms of offsetting? So for me, I think if we do go in this direction, I'd like to see us go to the, I forget the, I don't have it in front of me now. Was it $108?
Yeah, $108.50, yeah.
Yeah. And then take the money that was set aside in the general fund and the proposed budget and look at it when we're looking at other things on the reconciliation list. So, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. And thanks for the information. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned, I believe this, I'm not sure if it was the city manager or Ms. Braithwaite, that the estimate of the amount by which the commercial properties were, in effect, paying more than they should was $126,000, I think?
Yes.
So if you were saying that we addressed that for them, but then provided 50,000 on the other side to go to a single family, it seemed, unless I'm missing what you're saying, it seems like, shouldn't the 50 be closer to 126 also? If it was going to cancel it out, or is there another?
It, it doesn't quite work that way with just the new computations, but, you know, there's, it, it partly because it's, there are some refinements in everybody's numbers. So I, I think I'd have to, like, go through and, and double-check to describe it most accurately.
Okay. But, but so what you, what you were talking about, though, was adjusting the commercial properties to make their payment more in line with what, so to speak, should be, and then just pulling 50,000 out of the general.
Oh, oh, so, so I'm sorry. Councilwoman Kovar, the idea of the 50, the idea would be to go from $92 to $108.50. So that's where that different, that's, that's closer to the $126,000. That's that $126,000. What I was saying was that I have $50,000 that can help offset that impact somewhat as, as we go through.
Right. But if I heard you right, you said the 50 would bring it back down to 95.
Ninety-five.
So does that mean that, you know, 75 would bring it down, could potentially bring it down back to 92?
Yeah. I mean, we can figure out, we can do the calculations. It's just, seriously, we were doing this between meetings today.
So, I mean, I guess I would say, you know, it's the, it's the coronavirus and other factors that came into play. So it's, it's not anybody's fault, but I think we had all talked about it and recognized the need to have any type of future change in this, number one, potentially be phased in in more than one year, but number two, be more widely understood publicly. And I don't think we're at that point now. And again, there are factors outside of our control that led to that. So my, I suppose I would say if you put 50 or 75,000 or whatever it would take, that does come from the general fund, which means then that's affected, that comes from all the taxpayers citywide. It's a relatively small, small amounts are spread around there. But my inclination would be to, just because we haven't had the chance to really talk about it, either keep it the same at 92. And I recognize that that gets to some unfairness for the commercial, or fix the commercial and just subsidize it enough to bring it back to 92 for this year. Because we, I mean, I'm barely, I barely looked at your memo, and again, it's not a criticism. Just before this, I don't feel like I've really absorbed it all. I think it would be preferable for us just to keep it the same this year. If that adds slightly to our budget, that seems to make more sense than having another increase that people have to pay. So that's where, where I come down on it.
And if that was the council's interest, then I would really strongly encourage that we, you know, correct the actual equivalent residential unit. So we're no longer using what we know is no longer valid, the 1,228 square feet as average. It's 2,116. So with that as a goal, we can use that as the base rate for calculating the fee. And it, the commercial units will pay based on that. And if, if it's the goal of the council to have the single-family properties paying similar to what they're paying now, then, then that will require a subsidy that we could calculate the amount of in order to bring people down to that rate. But I, I think, given that we've known now for a while that the actual average equivalent residential unit of impervious area is different than what we were first using as the basis of our fee, I think we do need to correct that. And if you get to an endpoint of what you want to see people's single-family fees be based on, we can do the math to figure out what would be required. But we will need to come up with those funds from some other source other than the stormwater fee.
Well, again, if we're talking about $75,000, that's one thing. If we're talking about a lot more, it's a different story. But that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you.
I feel like this is the topic that just keeps on giving. We we keep having these discussions, it was like the our last budget topic or our last meeting topic of the uh of the meeting, and it's when we're all tired and aren't thinking well anymore. Um, yeah, I appreciate the thinking that's going into this, um, and I would agree that simple is better at this moment. I think both for reducing the amount of staff time that's involved and the headache of making confusing changes, as well as the fact that this is just a very complex item, and it's very complex in terms of understanding why there needs to be a change. Uh I don't think it's something that's easy for people to grasp quick quickly at a time when people are worried about their bottom line and are worried about payments. So I think um a minimal or um or no change with regard to the fee that households are paying, to me, makes sense right now. Um, I would be interested in seeing, as we talk about the fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand or whatever it is, I would be interested in seeing how that changes in terms of what individual households um pay, and obviously, some of that has to do with assessments and other things. But um I guess I'm trying to figure out how much would an average household pay if they're paying um the one-hundred-and-eight-fifty in the fee versus they're paying the seventy-five thousand spread across the whole city in their tax rate, if that makes sense. I I'd just be interested in seeing the breakdown there.
Yeah, I think I figured that kind of thing out last year. I don't think it takes much math, um, so.
Okay.
We can, we can try that.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Um, and I I just want to ask the city manager, and you don't necessarily need to answer it now, but um given the timeframe we have, do you, do we think that we could have some of those examples of um the calculations Councilwoman Kostik was thinking of for Monday night um when we're talking about the budget reconciliation?
I think we probably have to. I just, I I don't think it takes very long, but I I think I think that's when you need it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, um, Councilwoman DeBala, did you have something else?
Yeah, um, yes, I just have, want to make sure I I understand this last option that got put out there. So. If if the, if we adopt the new rate on the per, the new equivalent residential unit, then to then the total um residential properties have to be a certain amount of money raised, and that would be a hundred-and-eight-fifty each instead of the current rate of ninety-two.
Correct.
So then my question is the, you had, uh, the city manager had set aside fifty thousand dollars, but that's not enough to bring it down, back down to ninety-two.
Correct.
But seventy-five thousand dollars isn't?
I I have to figure out the number. I I think I think Councilwoman Kovar suggested seventy-five thousand. I I haven't calculated it.
Okay, but we don't know yet. So that would be one question.
Right.
The second question would be, as Councilmember Kostik said, where is that least impactful in the in the tax rate or in the stormwater fee? Um, and then I, I haven't, um, I I haven't heard a clear argument for why we can't adopt a new system that's effective next year, where we've fulfilled our obligation to say that, yes, we know we have to make an adjustment, but we also recognize that we, for a whole bunch of reasons, can't implement it right now, which is in the next couple of weeks.
Well, I don't think there's any problem with with moving to the five-hundred-square-foot um base by next year. It's just, you know, that would just needs to be part of a schedule to have the public hearings and the notice. Um, and so I I think that's, I think that that is doable.
Okay, thank you. I had somehow the impression that you had said that you thought it might be an issue even to do it next year. Okay, thank you.
I think the thing that, I think the thing that could be an issue for next year is the cost of the program to the individual property owners and having to recognize that adjust that number for individual property owners next year. And so there may be, again, an interest by the council to subsidize and phase a change in.
Right.
Can you remind us how many single-family properties there are?
Um, there's three-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-four.
Three thousand?
Three-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-four in one list that I saw.
So, I mean.
Yeah.
Straight out over, if everybody paid evenly, that's about twenty dollars a property to reduce their fee by sixteen dollars. So it doesn't really make sense, does it? Some people pay more and some people make less. So I don't know, that's something we'll have to figure out. Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this? Alright, so um, well, ask the um city manager and uh head of public works to bring back some of those estimates to us, um, because this will have to, regardless of what we decide, will end up um on the reconciliation list um anyway, so moving forward. So hopefully we'll have some more information on Monday, um, evening. Um, that is all we have for tonight. Um, I apologize for my technical difficulties. Um, I've got multiple phones here now, um, and hopefully I will um figure something out um for tomorrow, um, and I wish everyone a good night. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.